Yes, sir. February eleventh, two thousand nineteen, City Council meeting. Mayor Mike Oakes is absent. Our clerk presider Sean Ergen, attorney by great house of speed, Representative Chris Moore. Councilmembers Brian Hatfield, Jeff Kelly, Terry Lamb, Connie Rayburn, Trey Wester. And Jack Metrol.
Thank you. May I have approval of the minutes for January twenty eighth?
Can I have a correction to make? I believe it was on the third paragraph that starts with Jack announced. In the second line, additional snow removal agreement, right? Or is that supposed to say equipment?
Yup, thank you.
So would that change? Does anything I saw or the motion take seven minutes? Or to change?
I'll second what you're saying.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Four oh, thank you. Next on the agenda is special police department presentation by James Webster.
I'd like to call Sergeant Kyle Hall up front. And I have the pleasure tonight to recognize Sergeant Hall for some outstanding performance. And we've done this before, I think, within our department. And it's very rare that we would get to do one for something that he's been recognized by a national organization. And in fact, I don't know that I've ever presented one outside of our department. And I have here a letter that's from the Indiana Director of the MAD organization, Others Against Drug Drivers. And I'll read it, but in short, it's for his efforts to work drug and drug driving enforcement in the state of Indiana, which specifically right here in our hometown, North Vernon. In the last couple of years, through seventeen and eighteen, I know he's made at least seventy DUI arrests, and that's what this recognition is for. So I'll go ahead and read this. It says Sergeant Kyle Hall. "I want to express MAD's appreciation and heartfelt gratitude for your tireless efforts in keeping our families and loved ones safe. Supporting law enforcement is a key part of MAD's campaign to eliminate drunk driving, which is on our path to no more victims. Taking drunk and drug drivers off the road is a complicated and oftentimes consuming enforcement action, but one that saves countless lives every year. As the men and women on the front lines of law enforcement, you devote your time, risk your life, and do so a lot of time without proper appreciation. Your sacrifice matters. You keep impaired drivers off our roads, and that is why MAD refers to you as our hero." And that here is the actual plaque and certificate of achievement of Sergeant Hall. So I'll pass that along to him. Go first. Now, I know the city of North Vernon, over all the years, have arrested thousands and thousands of drunk drivers. And I know this is the first time we've had yet of recognizing one of our employees. So being a great job, Sergeant Hall.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something also, Mr. Hall and all of the officers. I was able to observe a arrest for DUI, and they handled themselves in the most professional manner I've ever seen. It was a very job well done. Even though the other defendant was out of hand, they still come right in there and did a very professional job. Thank you. Now then, for everyone, we're going to move on to city business. You're welcome to stay around. If not, you may leave this time. Okay, next on the agenda, James, I think you have the end, please.
All right, now we're going to break into our policy discussion. This is the first group of this year. I think, as you noticed in the letter, as I went through the remaining months of eighteen, we didn't have any changes. So many, many groups have just said no change on them. But now we're back at it for twenty nineteen. So if there's any thing specific I could talk to, I'd be glad to do that. Any recommendations from the department staff?
James, I agree with it. I just, and I like it very well. I just had a question.
Okay.
On page six, it just says not, or note, not all on-duty time is eligible for monetary compensation. I understand, however, what's the, what would be an example if they may be on duty who wouldn't be eligible for compensation? I'm just curious about that particular thing, if I understand.
Oh, I know one very specific example we use is drive time in the vehicle. So when they leave your house and drive five, ten minutes to work, we don't compensate them anyway for that, even though they're technically, and they aren't on duty. We don't compensate them for that. Sometimes we've told them, hey, if you're concluded with your work, but you still have a car that, well, maybe you stopped by a kid's baseball game or something, they're still really on duty because they're in uniform, they're in a car, but we don't compensate for any of that time. I just wonder if, so that would be a, thank you very much.
Chief, on the reserve officers, how many reserve officers do you have presently?
Six, I believe, right now.
And do you, are you going to get more, or what is, what do you usually carry?
We like to have as many as ten. It's been a good while since we've had ten. We usually will get to that, and anybody can answer on the department. That usually lasts just six months or so, and then someone will get hired somewhere, they decide they don't like it. So it's hard to keep that number, but we've had over five for a good while, probably twenty years.
And just what, what are their duties, or what, what can they do and what can't they do?
They're pure volunteer, but once, once they've reached all their training, they can do everything that we, they can make arrests, they can park cars, they can drive, they can take calls. You know, there's a lot of training to that. It takes maybe a year, two years to get them that level of training, but then they can do everything that we can do.
Do you train them in-house, or do you send them out?
Mostly it's in-house. They have to have a six, twenty-four hour training every year. We would like to send them off to training, but it's a volunteer thing for them. Most of the training is Mondays and Fridays and certain days, and the bottom of the work. So if they take a vacation day for training, we will compensate them for that. So we don't push that issue too much. Now, if something comes up on a Saturday, we would do it. We've asked them before, if they want to, they can go to a training session this early in the, it's on them.
They don't patrol by themselves, do you think?
Yes. They don't start that way.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
It's not a field training thing where they go through us, but they can. Takes about a year, maybe four, depends on how many hours they come in, because they have to meet a certain standard to move on. So if those calls don't come to them, they can't just pass that, you know, pass from one area to another before they, now I can just drive by myself. They don't go to a domestic call or something. They can't hit that check box that says I've done that, now I have to move home.
And they're training firearms, I'm assuming?
No.
And you're asking for more for their uniforms?
Right now, we have a budget of a thousand a year for reserve officer clothing. What we would like to do is just say, you're responsible for your own, kind of like we do with full-time people, just say, you're responsible for your own clothing, and give them a stipend for that. So that way they, and I had this conversation earlier with Connie. I think that they're reluctant to ask for things, because they'll usually say, do you need anything? Do you have any kind of, come on, good. So they might do, if they had the money, they might buy an extra pair of pants or something to, have new laundries, a lot, but I've looked a little bit back, so that's the idea.
And then on page six, item eight, I know the training we have down for incentives or monetary, if they leave early and so forth. Sean, have we collected everything that some of the officers that have left early after training? I know there was some that left.
I didn't understand the questions, I guess.
There's been officers in the past that we have trained, and they signed a release that if they left early after a period of time, they would be responsible for paying back their.
Yes. Chief, I recall one incident where someone did, right, I think we've, if there's a specific incident that maybe you're thinking, I'm not aware of anyone who did pay them left early.
I know at least, I think, three that we've collected are on that. The update to this particular part is about if we were to give them this incentive to move into their house and change stuff. Now, what's changed, and usually I put what changed in on this particular one, I must have just forgot.
But?
This one said they would only, we would only revoke the stipend if they went to another law enforcement job. So I changed it to say for any reason. If they'd been doing it for two years, it's like, you know what, I think I want to go do construction. We wouldn't have been able to do that, because they didn't go to another law enforcement. So that's really the only word that there was, the only word that he was underlying, that's blocking.
We've only had one officer to manage that stipend so far, haven't we, on that?
Two, two.
Hasn't been two.
And then one more.
Okay.
On the physical fitness, the M officer is required to do a physical fitness test every, what, twice a year, is that what you're adding? Is that what I read right here? So what is that? What do they, what do you put them through?
The first one, there are two of them. The first one we do is generally what we call the Academy's fingers test. It's the same thing we do when we go to the place academy, but there's also some other events in there for more, just to help the time go by and be more fun activities. But those, that's the mile and a half, three hundred meter run, push-ups, sit-ups, and a vertical jump. So that's required in the first test. The second one is what we call the obstacle course, and that's when we go out to the firehouse, and it's more for job readiness. So it's climbing stairs, dragging things, lifting and pushing a car, a little bit of run, and standing on walls. So there are two separate type of events. The second one is all in one, start to finish. You have to do a lot of different elements of the obstacle course. So those are the two things they have to do.
So is that done every year, or is it just, just when you hire?
Every year.
Every year? So is that all officers?
Every one.
I notice we have a couple of older officers, are they required to do, can they?
They have to complete the test. So it's out at the high school, I guess we had to turn on the football field lights so they could finish the mile and a half. But they have to be able to finish it. So that's the assessment. Usually when you get them all together, they come out pretty good, but they have to be able to complete it. So if they were to not be able to even finish, let's say, the three hundred meter run, they just stop, lay down, breathe, you know, that would be a pretty clear sign of, if you've got a physical problem. But that, so they get a little extra bonus if they do it at certain times. That's elsewhere in policy that's not in this, but if they can do the same thing they did when they graduated academy, they get a certain amount of money. What you do to get any academy, if you just show up, you don't get anything. So it's an encouragement to do better, but they have to complete it.
Yeah.
They have to show up and do all the elements of it.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for you, Chief?
Now, I'm making a wish to make stuff, yeah. Change just as presented.
Connie makes a motion to change. I'll second that motion. We have a second. A train? All in favor? Four oh. Thank you. I did want to ask you also about, you mentioned in here about replacing the, or the?
Yes. K nine.
K nine.
Okay, I'm a K nine angry. I didn't know you were going to be, I said, well, I'm glad you're here. In law enforcement, there's these trends, you know? When they do something for a while, and they're like, we were doing the wrong thing, and it starts down all in their pack. When we first were doing K nines, everybody went out and named it K nine. And now it seems like we're getting away from that. And our last dog, Hero, has been a good example of that. You remember, we lost a couple of years because of the back problems and hips and everything. So actually, with Shane came to me, if you want to come on up here, Shane's a man here, if you don't remember, it's a K nine, but we just want to talk to you a little bit about the dynamics of in and out of the Tahoe versus in and out of the crap.
So the Tahoe, there's, I don't have any measures on, but I have measured from a charger to the Tahoe. It's hardly the difference. So when the dog, it's not the dog jumping in, it's the dog jumping out. All dogs, most term shift, it's out of devastation. So at some time in their life, it's going to be, well, that's, it's going to be a nightmare. But, you know, Hero's in a couple of years early. So with that little bit of difference of, I mean, a couple inches from him jumping in from Tahoe compared to a charger, the clearance is smaller from getting in. It's going to save his back and put him on the road a couple of years. So that's primarily the biggest reason switching to a car from Tahoe.
Okay. What kind of condition is the Tahoe in at this point?
Not that bad. I mean, for, for us, we would have probably kept driving there a couple of years regardless. But what, what we are due for is, one of our, you know, we buy all these interiors, right? So we have a couple of older chargers. And actually, it's the one that Sergeant Messer, who was here, his was one of the first marked blue chargers that we ever bought. So we're going to transition that straight out. So we're going to take one of our older cars, make that to K nine, and we'll get another car to replace that. We only get a, he probably wants to, I don't want to get a break in car, make that to K nine car, because we just want to destroy it a lot quicker. Just because of the training they do with them, and they, you know, there's just a lot more goes into it. So I would think that the Tahoe should last several years. I know the mayor's asked about it. In that kind of capacity of driving, that shouldn't be an issue.
Can we use the Tahoe and replace it with, I mean, take about another older charger and replace the Tahoe with that and not?
Well, we were, they're both hols due to be out of service, but just with the, what the Tahoe was built, we would keep it a little bit longer.
I mean, I don't, I, I, I heard you say the Tahoe's still in good condition, used as a police vehicle.
Yes.
And it seems like we'd be right to use that as a mayor's car, and why not use it as a police car and retire one of the older police cars?
Well, that's all possible. The only thing was, I don't know how many months ago was, I was asked by the mayor if we had anything used coming up, because I think his car, he's ready to get rid of it. I don't know how long he would want to use it, but he mentioned something about him missing the airport, and he would take something he had in the fleet. And I thought of the things we have, especially, you know, I'm young, but getting in and out of the car, as for sliding out of an SUV, they're two totally different things. You know, and I thought if we had something more appropriate for the mayor, it'd probably be better off than the Tahoe. But that's just what I.
Barbara, did you want?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
I know when the, what did you sell in the Tahoe? You can't really put in a, like, prison in the back, can you, the dog?
Yeah, there's, there's, yes.
So with a charger, you'd be able to transport prisons to the dog's back?
I would still be able to up front, I think.
So whoever you're responsible to up front with you?
Yes, yes.
Do you foresee that as being a problem at all?
I don't, I have not had any issues thus far. Mine didn't have the Tahoe prior.
I guess from my perspective for the city council is, why do we have a car for the airport? Sean, maybe you?
He, Ryan has just always provided, what they, what he calls or needs a courtesy car for corporate people who land in, need to borrow a vehicle. And if they're using the North Vernon Airport, they often provide them with a vehicle, get around to a hotel or to a meeting. It's, all's I can say is, they've had them available since I've been here.
I just wondered how, how often they're used and?
I wouldn't say often, but the couple that Ryan has are certainly well-worn, and from an aviation budget perspective, you know, they, they would never have to, they might go out and purchase something. They've, they've always just, I mean, the two they have now are former police cars, right? They've just always kind of taken the hand me downs.
Right. I just wondered how many, how often they're used.
Ryan, Ryan, definitely Ryan here to speak at that.
I think, I think it's going before the?
None of that's done yet.
Board of Works anyway, so I just asked just some questions I got, since it wouldn't be brought up before the council.
I had asked him before, he had the same question, Barb, did about getting people in and out. So what would you have to do to a police car to make it for the dog? Cage, what needs to be done?
We have to have a new, take the backseat out, current backseat, all the door panels have to come off, and then they make a new piece and insert, that's where the dog rides, stainless steel, and there's no sharp edges, and that's where the dog rides in the back.
Okay, so you can?
And there's door bars and ventilation and things.
And it gets lower?
Yeah, so it's, it's at the floor of the car, not the side of the seat. We've secured one, we believe we've secured a used cage from down in Tennessee. So we're thinking we can get a very good deal on that. They were going to get rid of the car and throw it all out before they traded it to copper. So they don't use four, we do, so I think we can make a, make a good trade on that.
Okay. Do you find most people with K nines use cars? It was kind of a mix, or?
It, it is a mix, but I've seen it primarily the cars just for that reason, saving the dogs back.
Mm-hmm, makes sense.
I got, I got a set, I've been reading a lot about it in paper. You didn't stop a lot of people, you did a good job, just, thank you very much. You and your, your dog.
Anything else on the police side?
Anybody else have any questions? I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Pittsburgh building. I think Connie and Sean have been working on that, and I don't know, Connie or Sean, do you want to elaborate on that?
Connie, I, I, we have been discussing the amount of money originally put into the building, the amount of money then subsequently put in by the rebuilding commission to upgrade and rehab the building, and now the amount of money it's costing to maintain and pay utilities at the building. And we've just had a general discussion, I would say, about what we feel would be an appropriate amount, based on the work that that group is using the building does for us and for the community. But we haven't ironed out details or had Chris and or Larry write an actual agreement yet. So I'd send an email to council, kind of delaying out part of those discussions to try to get some feedback. If you want to add to that now, I'll take note. If it's something you want to bring Karen, Ms. Chilton, back in, I'd be glad to invite her back in for a discussion. Or we can lay out the terms and have more of a take it or leave it approach, whatever council desires.
I just know, my vote, my opinion, is city always retains ownership of that building, and we do not give up, that there will be no lease, in my eyes, that it is not the city's building. We put way too much money in that building, and it's right in the middle of our stellar closet. And I think it needs to be a city-controlled building, and we work out the details on the arts events they have as they can.
If you recall, the Perception yoga group presented us with a page of four different proposals for the building line. We did that again in your packet this time around. And I think, Connie, I was certainly leaning towards proposal number two, or some sort of hybrid of it, which certainly kept control of the building within the hands of the city, first and foremost.
I definitely agree with Trent, but also, you and I had a little conversation, I think we definitely should start charging some kind of rate, because I didn't realize our life bill was hoping as high as the yard, without any income, it's kind of?
Yeah, utility bills for the building exceeded four hundred dollars this month alone. And so I think, and I kind of picked Jerry's brain from a real estate perspective and commercial real estate and what like that, a building like that should lease for, and normally intended to pay their own utilities. But again, in this case, we recognize what they're doing for the city and the other things, you know, with the James County High School art, the Christmas in the city and some things they've done. So we felt like it was appropriate to certainly come up with a much reduced monthly fee that we would charge average Joe, if you will, in exchange for those services, so. But I haven't presented them to Perception Yoga and that group yet, and gotten their feedback. Again, without listening to council, I don't know if you want their feedback, or if we want to just set the terms and go with it.
Well, on proposal two, what you're talking about, the last sentence says, the city would need to provide supervision of the building, clean the building, manage its use, and keep it secure during all other events, acting like we're the ones borrowing the building, and we need to make sure to do our part. In my eyes, that's our job to do anyways, and we allow them to use the building, and they're the ones who need to do that.
Those were other additional items that Connie and I talked about. Another example, I mean, Connie, I said, along the cleaning, if, if, if they're going to, we were able to obtain their February schedule for the yoga classes, and sixteen out of the twenty-eight days, there were yoga events scheduled for the night. So if the city's going to use the building one night a month, or one night every two months, and they're going to be in it sixty percent of the time, we feel like we should also be paying for the cleaning of the building. So those are just kind of be some of the terms for their reduced price, if they would continue to do that.
I feel like this has been on the books for a while, we need to wrap, wrap it up.
I couldn't agree more, Doug.
And?
Yeah, I think I'd like to just go ahead and let us work out the proposal, and have it written up, and then we can present it to them and say this is?
That's what I was going to suggest, that the council go ahead and give you and Sean the ability to go ahead and write up a proposal, let our attorney look it over, and present it to them, see what they have to say, their comments, or so on and so forth.
Yeah, and I, I mean, they could always counter-propose, and council could say?
Right, that's what I'm saying, if they need to counter-propose or so forth, that we can work it out.
So is that a motion for my minutes that you?
I'll make that motion. Do I have a second for the motion?
Connie, what the motion was?
The motion was to direct Connie and Sean to write up an agreement with our attorney to present it to Karen Chilton.
Are we, are we going to see that?
Yes.
Are we going to see that before it's presented?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to do that in electronic format, or way too more weeks to have that in front of?
I'd like to see it electronic, if possible.
If we can get, so we'll work on the terms of the lease agreement, as you've instructed, get the legal counsel to write up terms of the agreement, and make sure that you review it in some capacity before it's presented.
And again, the only thing I'm wanting to make sure of, even as I'm reading out the proposal too, and I know that they're the ones that made the proposal, it seems like we're, we're the ones asking for permission, if we need to use it, hope, and, you know, it says that we, we recommend that it not interfere with our events and all this. Mine is, it's our belly, so if something has to be worked around, it's on their end that needs worked around. If we have something coming up, if they have a Saturday class, and we have somebody coming in there, wanting to set up Friday or Saturday, the city of North Vernon always has priority, which we should. And then I think we need to watch, set the precedent on them versus anybody else that would want that space for the same thing, for the same amount of money. That's what worries me.
Okay.
I say, I think we're opening a can of worms, I want to.
Russell?
Yes?
I think any review of this proposal should be done at a public meeting.
It will be presented to the council, yes.
You said he was going to email you when you were reviewing it before?
We will review it, and then we'll?
At a public meeting, right?
At a public meeting, it will be reviewed at the public meeting, after they talk to Karen about it.
Well, I thought you wanted to review it before they talk with Karen.
There's going to be electronic to us, and if we have comments, we're going to comment on it, we're not going to vote on it.
I don't believe we're going to be presenting it until after the next meeting, but I will draft something and have it for them to review. They will approve or deny it here.
At the next meeting?
That's perfect.
Yes, yes.
Just want to clarify.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. You want me to?
I seconded it.
Trent seconded it. All in favor? Four oh, thank you. Next on the agenda is request for city ordinance regarding storage containers. I just, we discussed this tonight, I think.
Yeah, it's just a draft. I used a few examples from the different counties, different states, because I didn't find anything specifically on Indiana. And also, I need more direction on how you actually want me to draft this. Do we want to restrict them in all areas, commercial and residential, just residential? How vague do we want to be, more specific as to the storage containers? And also, do we want to have any exceptions? Do we want them to be able to come to us and present their plans if we wanted to allow them to use that type of structure? The current drafting does not allow for that. So I just need to know what exactly you want.
A little more background, then, these twenty, I think they come in both twenty and forty foot steel storage containers that are on barges and so forth, have a life expectancy to them, and then at some point, people are allowed to purchase them. And they've become kind of in vogue with, I mean, people are turning them into homes.
I mean, people are turning them into homes or people bury them underground for zombie attacks. And so anyway, Councilman Hatfield then reached out to me a week or two ago and said, "At an area plan meeting, someone showed up with the request to place one of those in the county at this point." And although you can do some valuable things with them and turn them into homes, when they come off the ship, they look like, they look like thirty yard dumpsters. And, and Brian just wanted to get on top of it and suggest that we don't have these up and down all over the city limits and people's front yards. So I had reached out to Chris and said, "Can you start to look into it?" Obviously, he's come up with a nice draft, but that is what Brian was referring to and why he wanted to discuss.
So right now, this is kind of a draft, our first review of the.
Not until you guys tell me what you want. This is just a, a nice.
And this would have helped to have Brian here tonight.
Yeah, because this is kind of the first time we go.
Right.
I should take the table up until next meeting, but thank you, Chris.
No problem.
Okay, moving on, is there any additional new business?
I have one thing. This is Pat Schuern, I was hoping Brad would be here for this. We went ahead and placed sidewalks down Long Street to help with the school kids that do not have access to bus. But within a mile, we hit down middle school road. I heard there was talk, somebody brought up one time that section of Brownstown Road from the apartments to where you cross the road to go to the school. I know there's a lot of traffic right there. I don't know if that's been talked about, I don't know if we can put that in a plan and get that priced. If the city can do that, we can do that, but it's not a very long distance. But we are having a lot of kids that need to walk that, to, to get to school and are not providing bus transportation.
Yeah, that length of rope was on that application that Brad presented to you two weeks ago for paving.
That, that was sidewalk through there?
No, it was not, it was just the, the paving, so it would have been nice. Because we did middle school road as part of the community construction grant.
Part of the CCNG grant.
We used local funds for Long Street.
Okay.
Most of which now we just committed to that two thousand nineteen CCNG application.
Has Jerry submitted that?
I imagine he did. I thought the deadline was the end of January, we think it was here January twenty-eighth. But I can check into see the funds and see what's available, reach out to Brad and get a ballpark estimate about whether we can fit in an initiative budget one way or another.
I think that's the last area of that. I can't remember if it's one mile around the school, the school does not have to provide bus transportation. But I knew Long Street was a real big one and kids walk down. We had that lady here about middle school roads, we got that taken care of. But Brownstown Road would be the last one and I knew it would be a, a really big one to connect to that school.
Yes, very good. So you'll check into that for us? Okay, thank you. Also, Jerry might, can you give some light on this about our housing? Brian had talked to me something about forming a housing committee since we are starting to move forward with our housing. Jerry, can you?
We, we had a meeting here today, well, last week. And we was talking about our housing and all these developments that are going on, we're trying to get it going on. And we decided that probably the best thing to do is try, and I know everybody's starting a committee, form a committee to just look at what direction we wanna go with this housing and how it's gonna happen and course when I have to course and that kind of thing. And Brian's gonna bring it up tonight, but obviously he's ill, so he's not here. But that's where we're at. We're just looking at forming a committee to actually get this thing going. Because we've been, we've had what, we've had meetings for six, eight months now about housing and stuff that's happening. We need to get a committee going so we can actually get directions so the city and county and the people we work with all know where we're going. And that's kind of what we're, what we're talking about. It's very informal right now, as you can tell, but that's, that's what we're looking at.
Does HPG, what was the housing company you were using?
HPG Network.
HPG, are they involved in this?
Yes.
So they are. They don't, we didn't have them at our meeting last time, but they'll do this time and see what we need to do. If they are, they'll be involved here.
Who was at that meeting?
Just me and Brian and Pat and Eric Blamton there and Kathy or who is it, Earl, we just met Earl, but they're in. And we, we want to have you guys, it's only a two of us.
Right, right.
It's called Barbara, we got only a two of us.
Okay, any other new business, additional new business? Jerry, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm just letting you know, as of Friday, you can now pay your water bill online.
I can, Russell, I saw that a big deal.
Actually, we didn't even know anybody, I know, I think there was, I don't know, three or four, ten people paid over a week in online, so it's.
How strong are you to them right now?
They were, they were the last two months, they're all out. They're probably gonna be running tonight, so, yeah, we still did a good job, just like it's supposed to.
And face business. Sean, you have?
No, sir, I have nothing.
Did anyone from the audience have to say anything this time? We just need Barbara, I'm gonna see if anyone else has. Okay, Barbara.
Yes, there's a committee, does the, uh, council still have a handicapped sens- sensibility committee? The city, does the city have none of those?
I'm not aware of.
I met a woman recently who would like to serve on that. I believe the city has some kind of sensibility committee. I think Brad and Chris handled it mainly.
I thought Brad had handled most of our ADA requirements before, I don't recall there ever being a.
This one, I had advice that be on that committee for the city. She was riding in her wheelchair down Highway fifty, talking about sidewalks at the school. She was in the road, because she wanted to go to the gas station. She was in the road trying to get from the house on the Belt Route where she lives to the gas station.
Sure.
And I was talking to her and she would like to serve on that committee. I would be involved in the city's sensibility plans.
Would you, Sean, would you want to check and see if there is a plan for that? Get with Brad, see if there's a plan the city has? Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have one thing, this is separate, have we ever figured out on mowing yet? If it's, if we're federally contracted some of that out? I mean, have we ever, as Rick started with numbers together, like did this get it for mowing season starts?
We started here about six weeks.
I mean, because again, I know, I know if we take some of that load off them, I really think the city should be able to do some of their own sidewalks themselves instead of having to hire owners to do sidewalks. It'd be cheaper to hire somebody to mow grass and ask to do sidewalks or fix sidewalks, fix portions of sidewalks.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Fairly due to the community, a few months ago, I asked Legally about ordinance, how I can look that information up and find some specific. Because he said we're very vague and that the city was working on putting that together in a more official, defined format. And then the, the container question come up today, does that not kind of fall into the same area that these, once the ordinance is all put together, that it starts to cover?
We get the name, please.
Marshall O'Brien.
Marshall O'Brien, twelve hundred, our community, thank you, good question.
Can I help you with that, guys? We have, you were in this back here, as a matter of fact, I was making some copies for, for you to have because they're not quite container, but I think we can squeeze that in. Marshall, I'll work with you on that. By the way, he's been volunteering for stuff, so if you got some proof that you. Talk to Marshall, because he's got good ideas.
Thank you, Marshall.
Well, Larry was working on getting a ordinance.
Right, we did not many of them, we got.
Yeah, we went from a mess to the process of confining ordinances, but we were going, we were waiting, wanted to, we're gonna move to the update process before we had searchable discs. And then we were gonna use the website when the time was right to put our ordinance on a website in a more searchable format.
They're on Google Drive right now.
It's just a slow process, that's all.
And they're accessible.
The one thing about that, Sean, a lot of other cities have had a problem in that it's on a searchable disc as long as you have their proprietary equipment. And that's made them absolutely useless to the rest of us. So when you're looking at the contract for that, build proprietary. And Legally, how are we on that website?
Kate's sending you an email. We're at a standstill, so we've not moved forward like we thought we would. She's been busy and I've been out during Christmas and I'm not sure who you guys expect to develop it, so.
I thought that they were, I thought that's what we were paying that company for.
They provide the infrastructure, we have to put the content and the images and organize everything and put the pages out there that, so they're, to develop it, I'm not talking programming language, I'm talking putting the missing pieces out there from what they deliver.
Because my understanding is we're gonna have department heads send their piece in to, to one person, whoever we designated, to okay them and then send them off. I don't expect anybody to know what Russell needs on that website or what Chad needs on the website other than Russell and Chad, be my eye. I mean, I think we're doing it so we got away from having ten different websites and now we got one that directs everybody, so. I mean, I think Chief would know the best and put on the police and find out what they need. I don't know if that was you taking care of that or if that was Katie, I think.
No, we were, what we were trying to accomplish is looking at what they had today, building it out to a certain point and then reviewing that with all the department heads, saying what's missing, what do you like, what do you not like? What kind of images do you want so that they're not starting from a clean slate, right? We haven't even got forward on any of that. We were gonna start with the water utilities, because it's the smallest and it was a, you know, get a, get going on it much faster than something like the police stations, but we just haven't got there.
Right.
It takes time.
What do we need to do to move forward?
Well, she's documenting things and she has things that you guys need to review and answer some questions that she has. But I know that Bob was trying to help put like a percent complete type thing on there to understand and gauge where we are versus where we need to be and then go from there.
I, I just, I refer a lot of questions back and I was talking with Marshall today and that was one of the things I said is our new city websites are all now. And I can never, I, I understand, I mean, the committee side, you guys are volunteering that, so it's definitely hard. I just, I didn't know where we were in the process to do that and if there's a way we could bring the department heads together, they can help on their department.
Well, what we discovered, once they came back with their infrastructure piece, it's not so clean cut. It's not like going to Squarespace or Shopify or any of those user-friendly click and point and upload and your templates are all there. It's basically just a very time-intensive solution that you have to learn all over again because it's theirs, it's their proprietary system. So it's not been easy.
And I'd say with the money we spent there, it kind of helped us with that, if I'm not mistaken, and I thought that was part of that. Because my main, one of my biggest concerns is it's not, I want it ready before the pool and park open up and really start getting those events out there and the festival committee, I mean, that's gonna be our, we got, we got Facebook. But still, to have a city website that anybody can get on before that weather changes.
I think what they were contractually supposed to do is review it with us and show us how to do it. We did that, but then Christmas hit, Christmas in this, right, so then there's been all this time. So now we have to go back and reset ourselves and it's not easy because it's very cumbersome.
Oh, I'm sure. That's why I kind of walked away from the committee a little bit, because I had time to sit in on it, not help do whatever. I just, like I said, I, I know we're gonna start pushing events soon.
That being said, that's why cars paying to do online, we've been telling customers for almost a year. And that's why we moved on, just put it on the old website.
Right.
Once anything gets going, then we can, that's why we, and we've gone. We've been telling these people, I mean, every month, where you gonna get it, what you gonna get it?
Well, I know, like I said, I was in the original meetings with Reva and Katie and Bob and there was a lot of time spent on that, just getting to the point of starting to do it. So I know it's a time process. I just, I wanna make sure we can get people used to that website before we start doing our parking events and our pool events and, you know, the online bill pays. Because I think that's gonna be the idea, everybody's gonna go and see the city calendar.
Yeah, we, you know, we've been ready to go with this for a couple of months.
Right.
And we've been waiting on the website to get finished, so we didn't just blow it out there all at one time.
And we knew it had a long build time anyways. I mean, it was eighteen week, something crazy like that, and I knew it was long.
Yeah, yeah. And right now, we're a four-person team, one of them, you know, and Bob's involved in all this, Kate has her own business. I'm, you know, my mayor admin stuff comes first, so free time.
We're not blaming that.
Yeah, but you know, when you got four people, you're slim pickings on how much you can get done.
You know, how can we get it moving along now? Is there something that we can do as a group to help pull this along?
Well, like I said, I think you need to take a look at Kate's email and then go, we'll come up with something from there.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, anything else? Yes, sir.
I spoke with Legally before and it seemed like she's trying to do so much in the city with the Super Bowl award and all the things she's trying to put together. But this ordinance thing comes back to me, it seems to be significant, I hear that there was a pole wiring with the city and maybe that's not, shouldn't be part of it, and the containers, you know, I wanna be a part as a new member of the community to see it cleaned up, the city restoration, whatever's going on here, I wanna be a part of the community, it's going in a positive direction. So I'm concerned that she says now that these ordinance is a big, big job and it can go on and on and on. And the containers start popping up, it sounds like a, a serious issue, but I just, I'm concerned for how it's gonna continue to develop and progress as to if that here's an issue, here's an issue. And keep putting that little fire here without having a format out prevents all of that. I don't know how it's done and I realize it's a big job, but.
I think the ordinances are already in place, they're just sometimes hard to find. They're hard to find for me, I would find for you guys.
I know there's a draft of the ordinance, the codified ordinances that have been made, but I don't know what's happened with that. I have to talk to the lead city attorney to see where we're at.
I think some of that with the ordinances was we probably have some language in there about horse and buggy still that we need to throw out. You know, I mean, I don't think it was we don't have certain ordinances. Some of them just need cleaned up a little bit, some of them are so old that they don't even retain.
But to your point though, it just goes to show how it is a living document and new fads and new things come up all the time. And so you're all the time adding language about, you know, like pet chickens or the thing. Now, these containers weren't a big deal just a few years ago, they really, they really caught on. Matter of fact, I've been told that the cost of a container has gone from where you could pick one up for a few hundred dollars to now they're up to ten thousand. And there's something that people want, so you just have to, it's always gonna evolve. I think our ordinance is in general in place, the pole wire notwithstanding, a lot of what we do in the city is, is based off what the county area planning commission has in place. So some of those items we're referring to are, you know, kind of out of our hands. But the city certainly has the authority to say, if you wanna allow the containers or chickens or cows or dog breeding operations in the county, you can. But we're gonna make it more specific and it just, it, it goes as they come, you know, it often evolves. Fire pits was the hot topic too, absolutely, yes, we spoke about that, didn't we?
Thank you, Marshall. Okay, uh, in our package, we see Nate Fulton, or Big Brother's Big Sisters Bowl. They have organization, they're having a bowl off next month, I think it is, over at Seymour. So if anyone wants to take a look at that, you're welcome to. Club of North Vernon is presenting for Marcus, he's, he was with the Kelly School of Business. He's a very good speaker, I've heard him speak before years ago, but it's on February nineteenth out at the library at twelve noon. He's a very good speaker. And then the ARC, we donated money to the ARC, it's a very good organization also, they sent a thank you letter. So thank you for that. Need approval for claims.
I'm gonna motion to pay claims.
All second, Connie, motion on the claims.
All available. For world. Chairman?
I'll make that motion.
Last second. Jerry seconded it? All favor? Thank you, thank you all very much. And Sean, you need these.
No, too late, Mr., yeah, I do need you to sign this, it's a two hour deal. Not for me, but I do need you to sign your annual.
That's why we're waiting for statements. That's why we have the statements over there.